The March 21st, 2022, 6:30 PM. All members of the council are present. Others include James Johnson, City Clerk, Treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our City Manager. The next item is to approve the minutes of March 7th, 2022.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes of 7 March, 2022.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Charbonneau. Any discussion on the minutes? Having none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is comments by members of the public. See where anyone has signed up for this evening. So we'll move on. The next item is proposed rules of procedure amendment. And the City Council, and I believe it was also posted on the city website, had a proposed amendment to our rules of procedure regarding cellphone use during council meetings. Did any members of the council have questions on the proposed amendment? Basically, I'll read the amendment. It's all electronic devices used by councilors. The public and others present shall be silenced, which if amped, is turned off or put on vibrate during council meetings. And then texting unless authorized by the City Council for official city business will be prohibited by members of the City Council, City Manager, and City Clerk and Treasurer during the meeting. This basically ensures that there's no communications going on, and it helps with the transparency issue. So I just want to make sure that all business is conducted here at the table, and so on and so forth.
I do want to mention that with the hybrid meetings, really, so it's not hybrid tonight, that it seems that that type of remote participation is now today's normal. And I want to put out there that oftentimes during a meeting, people are contacting me to let me know that they're either on the call, prepared to speak if the council wants to ask them any questions, or I've emailed people who told me they were going to participate when you didn't call their name. I emailed them and said, "Are you on the call tonight?" Because you've written a memo. They wanted to be of service to you. And I've also had emails with others who have said, "I'm on the call if you need me." So those types of coordinating while the meeting is taking place is commonplace in this world. I'll also let you know that tonight, for example, Chief Bam is at a meeting that's due to adjourn at 7:00. I don't know if he was going to participate by phone or appear in person, but now that I see there's no computer, I need to tell him that he needs to come here in person.
Yes.
Those are the types of communications that I have is all in an effort to make sure your meetings flow smoothly.
According to the Secretary of State's office, it's highly discouraged. I've been in contact with Vermont League and the Secretary of State's office, and they say it's highly discouraged to be texting and communicating via a council meeting. It's very, it basically comes down to a transparency issue. They said unfortunately, the open meeting law does not address it, but you can address it in your rules of procedure. And so I feel we need to address that. You reference communicating with people during the remote meeting. The last meeting, the only person remotely was myself and another city employee. And that was it on the remote call. There were no presenters. The meeting before that, there was only two people on the call, if I recollect, and that was myself and another employee.
Right.
And so I just, I just...
I have an exchange from the Chair of the Recreation Committee, who wrote a memo to the council, and she was prepared to be able to respond if there were any questions. She wanted to make herself available.
I saw her on the call, and I would have acknowledged her.
When I didn't hear you calling her name, I sent her an email and said, "Are you coming on the phone call?" And she responded that everybody was sick in her family. She was coming on the call. She said she was late, but she got to hear that everybody was approved, and then she had to go. So these are completely...
I proposed an amendment, and I stand by the amendment.
Oh, I'm not disputing anything of that. I wanted to explain how it comes in handy for my role for the work that you guys are doing. And that's entirely up to you what you choose to do with it.
I have also, well, I'll address that in a minute. Now, I'm going to address it right now. And you said there's no computer tonight. I gave the council and you two weeks' notice that I was no longer bringing my computer, my own personal equipment, to run the hybrid City Council meetings. I felt it's enough for me to run the meetings. I've stated it in the past. And I gave you two weeks' notice that I was not going to be bringing my computer this evening, nor my video equipment. This council had plenty of notice, and you had plenty of notice. And so I didn't think you should put the onus on me for not having a computer tonight. Because I emailed, and I don't have, I can pull my email up and show everybody that I communicated that. And so don't put the onus on me about not having a hybrid meeting. Because part of it isn't the responsibility of the mayor either to run hybrid meetings. My job is to run this meeting. When we were completely remote, yes, run the meeting. But now that we're back in this format, my job is to run this meeting, not to have to worry about technology. And so don't put the onus on me about not having a computer here tonight. So I have no idea who's connected, who's not connected remotely. The council had plenty of notice. So I just wanted to address that, too. But I have proposed an amendment. The, just to let everyone know, the first part of the discussion, the first part of the amendment came right from the City of Burlington's rules of procedure. And then I added the texting. Because I actually felt a transparency issue. I felt there was an excessive amount of texting going on at the council. And we keep hearing about transparency, transparency. And I just felt this was very important. And so I have proposed my amendment, and I hope that there will be support for it. And plus, I think it's just common courtesy.
So on the rare occasion that somebody may text one to say that, oh, like our former Rec Director that you texted to see if she was coming onto the meeting. It's a procedure. It's not, it's not an ordinance or anything like that. So obviously, if something comes up, it can just be said. I have the Director of Recreation. I have a text going with her. That's part of the transparency. And then I'm sure it'd be like, okay, what is she saying? So I think it's easily worked for the times that somebody has to text in. But overall, I don't think texting at the council table is a good idea. I think it's a transparency issue. And if we're sitting at the table, every single person at this table should be paying attention to what's going on at the table.
I do have a question. The word texting, is that going to be too specific?
I considered texting on the phone. But I also consider using like Facebook Messenger, a form of texting.
Or email. That's not texting, though.
Well, I mean, we could always have email in there if we want, but I thought it would just basically, I never thought of the email. I was more concerned about texting and Facebook messaging. Because I know a few years ago, wasn't more than two or three years ago, there was a big uproar when we had a certain council member who was using their phone a lot during the meeting messaging. And so that's another reason why I wanted to have this. Because I know a couple of years ago, it was a big uproar at this table when we had a council member doing it. I think texting, I mean, in the broad sense, we could put the word email in there if we want, but I just thought it covered any type of, any type of messaging. Anybody have...
I can assure you, I have never done any of that. Here's my stuff.
Okay, anything, anything else on this?
I'll move to accept the, I have to read the number nine. The all electronic devices used by councilors. The public and other present shall be silenced, if amped, turned off, or put on vibrate during council meetings. Texting unless authorized by the City Council for official city business will be prohibited by members of the City Council, the City Manager, the City Clerk Treasurer during the meeting.
There was a motion made. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Made by Ms. Pedersen, second by Mr. Charbonneau. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm a technological mudeye. But I was just curious. I remember during the years, sometimes someone would come in, and they would record the meeting. And they would, on their, it looked like on a phone device. And they would, I think they projected it to some of their friends. And I was just wondering whether or not this would prevent a citizen from coming in and making their own recording, which I think they were using a phone. As I say, I'm not familiar with them enough to know that they're able to do that. But I think they were using a phone. And that would, it seems to me that ordinance would prevent a citizen from recording. And I thought that we had a right to record, but I don't know.
So that's a totally, totally different issue than council texting, the council table texting. Public meeting, you can record it. Usually the only thing that says that, you need to let people know that you're recording them. Obviously, we're being recorded. So no, it wouldn't, that's not texting. It wouldn't interfere with that, in my opinion.
So you could come in with a phone and record what was going on.
And who knows, how they may discover us, you know?
You should be so lucky.
Thank you. Wanted to know.
Other questions? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Another point of interest about that is that anything at the table, you know, if anybody's texting, it's subject to public records requests. So if anybody's texting, anybody can request his tasks. Because it's subject to open meeting law.
That's how it happened. You put on the website. The next item was the Newport Development Funds and Discover Newport Funds update. Tim Turney. He sent a note this morning that he was not going to be able to be here in person. And he thought he could connect remotely. It's a good thing. I requested that he come to the next meeting because we don't have remote. He would have been sitting on the call. And so he did confirm he can definitely be here on April 4th for the meeting. I just felt myself it would be better to have him in person to be able to answer questions. And sometimes when you're on a remote, there's sometimes limits. You know, you feel limited on the time. And I know he had another commitment, too. He kind of doubled book. And so what I would like is, I would like to have a motion to table item number five until the April 4th meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to table item five until the next meeting on 4 April.
A motion made by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vashant to table item number five to the April 4th meeting. Any discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next year is the Five Year Capital Investment Program for 2022 to '27. I believe the council, this is where it gets presented to the council. We have to have two public hearings on it. I believe it was also posted on the website as part of the agenda items. And I will turn it over to the City Manager to, I guess, start the process, give us a brief overview, and go from there.
Great. Thank you. The front page talks about the process and the timeline. And I like having this as the front page because it gives a good overview to the reader about what to expect in terms of process. Because we are a municipality in excess of 2,500, we need to have two public hearings. Tonight is the night that it's being presented to the City Council. I have the department heads have joined us tonight. So if you have any overview questions, they're available to answer them. But I've presumptuously included the next two public hearings for May 2nd and June 6th. That will meet the timeline. Should the council want to make any changes to this, any changes will require an additional two weeks' notice. So I think those dates provide the parameters to move this along. Inside this capital plan, this is a document of guidance. It is not something that is carved in stone, if you will. It is a plan for the city to be able to have a good idea of where they're going with their large capital purchases, projects to be completed, and equipment to be purchased over the next five years. This is a document that gets updated on an annual basis. It addresses all of our departments. It's our fleet replacement program, our pavement, and our street reconstruction plan as well. As you recall, with the merging of the Facilities Maintenance into the Public Works Department, there's a different type of presentation on that particular section. We think we've simplified it. So you no longer have to worry about matching the narrative to a spreadsheet, which we think it will be an improvement. And you'll notice that we're sticking to our normal process of trying not to burden the taxpayer with a sudden increase in expenses, but rather keeping the amounts uniform from year to year so that it makes this a little bit easier to digest. There's really not that much different from the one that we presented last year but for the restructuring of the Rec Department with, but the Parks Department with Public Works. And the back spreadsheet is now incorporated into the body of the document. So what I would ask is that the council take a look at this. This is also going to go before the planning commission. And if there's any changes that the council would like to see, those would be presented to us on May 2nd. We can incorporate those changes, and then you'll meet the timeline in order for this to be, hopefully, approved on or after June 6th when you have the required second public hearing. So as you go through this, I know that you're just skimming it, but I did ask the council, the department heads just to give a sentence or two about what their departments have in mind, if that's something that you'd like to hear from.
Yes, sure.
Okay. So why don't we start with...
I guess I'll start in the corner.
Okay. So we'll start with...
As Tom gave you that, and what the word raised is, the monetary request is the same from previous years with the Target Park Playground. We're trying to figure out, waiting from the state to give us, waiting for the state to give us what the abatement plan for the soil is. We're kind of moving up some of those projects that were on the list that was, I guess, presented a couple of years ago or last year. So like the ballpark, the lighting on the softball field, the dugouts, and things like that. So a lot of the other projects were in previous years. So that's the biggest change there.
Last question. You mentioned abatement. Have we got any official report? Because I, you know, because I know you're trying to come up with a plan. But have we got the actual Brown Fields report?
No. We have another one that's coming forward. So we, there's still some unknowns on the abatement plan. As far as we know, it's just the playground to splash pad area. We don't know how deep they're going to be expecting the clean soils abatement. We think eighteen inches. We don't expect it to be more than eighteen inches. We don't know what the level of contaminants are, but we all know it was a landfill. So we aren't terribly surprised. And depending upon the level of contaminants, that will give us the next level of knowledge about where those contaminated soils can go. There's a possibility, again, depending upon the levels, that they could be stored right at the park. They'd be rebanked in a different area and capped. That would be the most cost-effective. Another, and again, it's going to depend on the level of contaminants. Another option is that if they meet the criteria to be able to be landfilled, if the contaminants are at a certain level to be used as their alternative daily cover, that will be an advantage for the city. The next level could be that it has to be landfilled at Casella. And then the most extreme would be that the exceedance are such that it will have to be removed off, out of the state of Vermont. So we're waiting for that information. In speaking to Casella, they're more than willing to work with the City of Newport. They would like to see this project kicked over the finish line. So they stand at the ready to be able to support this project. They've already made a very generous donation to it. And we're working with the Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Environmental Conservation because they have a lot of funding right now. It's invaluable for this project. And it looks like whether, it looks like we're going to be on the hook to have to reclaim that area no matter what. So it's a very big equation. At this point, we're still in the information collecting stage. And we'll be making a presentation to the council. I'm hoping within another month or so, we have more information.
So was it, what triggered the whole Brown Fields thing? Was it the digging for this splash pad that triggered the whole environmental? Or would have been triggered anyway just because we were going to originally just replace the playground, replace playground equipment?
It's well-known that that is a landfill.
I know that, but I won't, but...
So in order to put the playground back on its original site, we have to do environmental studies.
So we didn't do those first?
Well, the, the original playground was installed, maybe somebody knows, maybe 1980? I don't know what year it was.
Been there a long time. There was no equipment.
The standards are very different back then.
Oh, yeah.
So fast forward, it's a logical place to put it if we can meet all the safety criteria. So in doing our due diligence, the other thing we have to be mindful of is the flood plain. So we can't mess with a flood plain. If we extract contaminated soils and replace them with clean soils, it's going to have to be at the same level. So this is all part and parcel of filing for these grants to be able to replace that and add a splash pad. It's our due diligence.
So I wasn't obviously around when the dump was there, but it's my understanding that the dump is at the other end of the park, over like where the other entrance is. That's where it primarily was? Does anybody know?
From historical photos of what there was, it appeared to be, let me see here, picture this. Playground is here. I'm a visual, I'm sorry. I'm a visual. You bet. The road that comes like this, the landfill was more that way.
So not, not really where the playground is?
So I guess my question is, is that if the playground is contaminated...
I'm sorry?
I guess my concern or question, what I don't particularly understand is that if it's just the, just the playground that area is contaminated, but if the dump was someplace else, wouldn't that make the whole park contaminated?
Well, the only part that is being tested right now is the playground area and then the field next to the playground area. And they've had to do, they have to redo that, that field. And the field that I'm talking about is the one as you're driving in, the Vista behind you.
Yeah.
It's on your left. So it's that first field that has to be retested because the testing they did, I think it was a particularly wet day. So they're coming back to re-scope that, and then we're going to know.
There's a monitoring well over there. There is a monitoring well in that area. I've seen it. It's a thing that's in the ground. It looks exactly like monitoring wells. I've seen when they did the, where Potsdam Bank is, where I've seen a couple of those in the Garden of Parks. So there's one, there's a monitoring well. So I'm assuming they're just testing out of that well? They're not doing new borings, or?
I think...
You want me to...
Yes, please.
No, they came in the first time and tested lower throughout the whole facility. This last round, they were testing the upper foot, six inches. The worst spot in the whole park is the playground. The field Laura's talking about, they said the tests were inconclusive, so they got to come back in in April. They're going to retest that. We're hoping that that is fine. The rest of the facility is fine to use. But we are on the hook to clean up the playground, no matter what we do.
Because it's been just, because the ball got started, so...
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. I just was having a little trouble putting all the little pieces together.
It's very complex. There's no doubt about it. The one thing that has been made clear to us is that there's more funding now than there's ever been in history because of the ARPA funds. So if we have to be on the hook to do it, with or without, we might as well do it and get some sort of benefit from it. But there's more, there's more coming. And like I said, I hope we'll have a more comprehensive presentation, I'm hoping during the month of April, if all goes as we've been, as we've been spending a lot of our time working on this. And it is complex, no doubt about it.
Is it harmful to children to use it now? Well...
Currently, they tell us we can still continue to use it. We do not, the EPA and the state of Vermont. But we, whether we postpone digging it out and doing the actual fix to it, eventually we have to. We're on the hook to do it. But right now, as long as we don't disturb the soils down there, we can use the facility. But it's not going to get any cheaper five, 10 years down the road than it is right now. You're just trying to deal with the problem.
And that thing hasn't been a dump since when?
That summer, when I was in Haisel. I want to tell you how long ago that was.
No, but I was just saying, it's been a long time. Because I know growing up, me, the dump was over where the recycling is, the Netto dump, before they, they were burning in there. That's where I remember. I don't remember it at the park, but I'm younger than...
Hey, watch it. That dump was right along that road that goes around, along the skating rink, not the popular skating rink. That area in there on the right side of the road, that's where the dump was.
Two things. One, would it be smart to think about relocating the splash pad? And two, my understanding is that some of the contents of the landfill were used as fill further out, including where the supermarket is, Vista, in that area. Some was used as filler.
Not from Garden of Park.
Not from Garden of Park.
And when they created, no, not from Garden of Park. And when they created Garden of Park, if you look at the history, they brought it from the, from the city sand pit. It was well documented. They brought in truckload after truckload of sand from the city's gravel pit to fill in the park.
Did they bring in anything else?
This was back in the 1930s, you know, from research, you know? And they were using this, I mean, who knows back in the 30s? That's long before my time. And all I know is from reading historical articles that are all published during the WPA project, they were bringing in truckloads of gravel. Forget how many the story said, per day, to fill in the park. Because they were, as they said, they were getting rid of the mosquito-infested swamp back in the 30s. That was the exact thing in the article that I researched in the paper. So it was from the, from the city gravel pit, wherever that was at the time. So there was...
Yeah, they put 50, 50, the story is 50 men to work through a summer for that program. I'm not sure there weren't 50 dump trucks running back and forth, but it might have been 25.
And where the shopping mall is...
Took them all summer.
Half of that is, half, where the shopping mall is, Vista and that whole area to the east side... Half of that is, half, where the shopping mall is, Vista and that whole area to the east side, you're basically looking at sodest. It was basically the old lumber mill. And it was all sodest that was just dumped there. And that's what was used.
So the floor heaves.
Well, that's why the floor heaves. They couldn't get to the bottom. So, okay. Good. So we'll be looking forward to a good detailed presentation on that.
Okay, the next one, John, are you ready to give us two sentences on the floor?
As you look at mine, there's, there's really not much change in there. It reflects the boat that we just had. That number went from six hundred to eight hundred thousand. And then the rest is just our standard equipment procurement that's been there in the past. And then there is a line in there that I added for updating existing equipment and some new equipment on the new truck and for painting the apparatus bay because that hasn't been touched since the day it was built. And you're starting to see a lot of, a lot of discoloration in where they're. And it's, it's just time to get that done. So there, there's a line in there for a hundred thousand dollars for that. And it will be well spent. And I have it, it'll be in next year's, we'll probably have a number for replacing, putting money aside for the aerial because that's gonna be sticker shock when, when that comes to. So hopefully I'll, I'll be long retired before we have to purchase that one.
Why don't we have that one?
It's a, it's an O-one.
O-one, I'm sure.
So.
Six years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna recommend we start putting some money aside because if we were to take delivery on that truck today, it'd be about a million three. And at the rate that they're going up, we're gonna be one point seven to two probably by the time that truck comes to.
We know we need to have an aerial with the grain company, with a hospital.
We, we use it a lot. So it, it adds a level of protection and operational preparedness that we can protect the city. It really, we use it a lot.
I remember when that was specked out, chief to it. Had the demo truck come up, sit behind the pick and shovel with the highest level of those apartment buildings. They were like five stories and he was showing how it could go up there.
It goes up eighty-five feet and we use it for chimney firmer. We use it as much for reach as we do for height. But we, we use it a lot.
Yeah.
It is a necessity in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Can you feel it going, Tom?
Sure. Let's thank Mike. He's been a great asset to work with. We both worked on the rec department facilities capital plan. Mine's pretty detailed. Equipment is pretty much what it is. I keep rolling it ahead. I try to, as Laura said earlier, I try to keep the cost about the same every year so it's not a sticker shock. As you all know, I typically, I haven't leased a piece of equipment for a long time. We always either start it with a capital or sinking fund. And as John said, when we start making big purchases, which I've already started with our next back truck, you know, we're looking at a five, six hundred thousand dollar truck. This way we don't lease, we're buying it outright. We start it, start that process going. Roads, last, last year I, I came out with a water and sewer capital because they're, they both coincide with each other. My roads coincide with water sewer projects. So if I'm rebuilding a road, typically I'm either changing the sewer main or some drainage or just changing out water services. But they kind of work hand in hand. And again, it's a template. We might have a bad year and have to hold off on one road and jump to something else if, if that needs to be the case. But again, next, next meeting, if you, anybody has any, you know, further questions, feel free to write them down.
Have you gotten payment cost yet?
No, I haven't even asked.
Great, everything skyrocketing. I was wondering if those costs were double what you estimated.
Yeah, you can't, I have no idea at this point. I plan on doing three roads, hoping to do three roads with sewer lines. They may be the only roads I might suggest that we pay. If the costs are that high, it might be beneficial to sit on that money and see what next year brings.
May not be related to this, but are we gonna be doing the Lake Muck project?
The sewer?
Yeah, the sewer where they have the assessment. Is that the water or is that Lake Muck?
Water.
Oh, the water.
The water?
Yes. We submitted our permit, another permit with the state of Vermont to start that project and we have all easements in hand finally.
Okay.
As you all know, I bought those materials five years ago and they've really been the ones dragging the feet.
Right. Okay.
I'm hoping to, I'm hoping we have a dry spring and we can tackle that in the books.
I was just curious. This made me think of a thing.
I just assume wait for Chief Bingham to give an overview of his section of this plan and move into the city beautification plan in the municipal building. This is the same, same one that we proposed last year, no changes, just updated the dates. There's a possibility from what I understand that maybe after all these years, a wayfinding kiosk might actually be a reality in the next year or two. And the Newport Municipal Building still is gonna eventually need some attention on the slate roof that covers the municipal gym. And that makes us nervous because that's gonna be a doozy as well. We've been trying to keep up with the municipal building needs on a year by year basis. And I think that we overspend that line item each year. This year we're focusing on the fire drill, the pull boxes. And that work is underway. And as you know, the police locker room is underway and that'll be finished within the next month or so. So that completes it, just minus the Chief Bingham section. That's your, that's your broad overview. And we look forward to taking it through the process. It's always refreshing to have this in place. We try to time it after the operating budget is done. So we look to this to help frame out next year's capital budget when we start the process. And, and, well, we start it internally in September, but we present our operating budget to the council starting in November. But this, this provides the framework continuity.
So if the council has questions, will department heads be say at the next meeting? Or do we wait to the public hearing? Or like I say, study this in the next week or two before the next meeting or between the public hearing?
We can work that any way the council chooses. Let's see, we've got two meetings in April. You're welcome.
We only have two meetings before the public hearing.
Yep. So I think if you wanna make it another agenda item perhaps, that'd be fine. And we'll make sure that we're available.
We could keep it on for the next two agendas, just in case something comes up. We may have something, we may not, but we just keep it as an agenda item.
Okay.
Okay, very good. We'll move on. New business, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I've just got three little issues to do and be signed. London Farms, Walgreens and Panda Tower.
Oops. Such a dog.
Any other new business? Mr. Shaven? Mr. Wilson, new business?
No.
Now, any new business?
No.
New business? Mr. Garcia, old business?
No.
Other, any old business? Mr. Wilson?
No.
I don't have any, any old business?
No.
No, thank you.
I have two things. One, I need the council to assign a person to participate in the bylaw modernization grant consultant vetting. You know what I'm on? I filed a grant for the bylaw modernization grant that was awarded. And we're going through the RFQ process. And I need a representative from the council to sit on that interview panel. It's a quick turnaround. And it's probably a two-meeting commitment. It can be remote.
We're temporary.
I can make it work for you if that's a thing that you wanna do. It's, it'll be a very quick turnaround because I think the start date is, if I, if I remember correctly, around October. So we're gonna do this very quickly.
If this wasn't on the agenda, you didn't have it as part of the agenda.
I, it's under old business.
Well, we're taking action. Should have been an agenda item. Because normally the council doesn't normally do appointments or recommendations or votes unless it's on the agenda.
This is very short term and I don't know if you're gonna make a vote of a person or if you're just gonna say, hey, I'll do it.
I'm just stating it for the record because, you know, normally things, we've had a policy here at the table where we don't appoint or take action unless it's been like an agenda item.
It's up to you. So no action?
We can have it on the next agenda.
Who's it for?
It's for the bylaw modernization grant.
Oh.
And I wanna let folks know that there's a new website for providing information for recyclables. And if you click on our website and scroll to the bottom under recent news, there's a new section for it. It's called City of Newport Recyclables. So it's on our main page. It's also on the Public Works page and on our recyclables page. And it takes all the library of disparate information and it puts it in one contained page. And there's monthly topics and resources for recycling, waste and organics. So I hope folks will take a look at that. That's part of what was included in the administrative grant with Casella. So it's quite nice. It's a big improvement over what we have.
Okay. I guess I do have dual business. I guess in the future, from reading your, your memo or whatever, if there's meetings that I know say council member attended, but I didn't even know about it as the mayor, I would like to be informed of meetings where potential members of the council are attending. I just feel, I believe I am still the mayor and I should know when there's potential meetings that are being held with different groups. And I know my schedule can be busy, but it's up to me to make the time. And so I, I just feel I should be let know when there's meetings.
Happy to do that.
Thank you. I know Travis, I didn't recognize him with his baseball cap.
Yeah, sorry I was late.
We could go back to that if he wanted to do a brief.
It's up to you.
Would you like to do a brief overview of your capital?
I certainly can.
We can go back. I didn't quite recognize you with your hat on.
Yeah, sorry I was late.
Are you ready?
First night of practice.
Oh, practice.
It's that time of year, springtime. It felt good actually.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, so for the police department's five-year capital plan, nothing crazy on here from the past years. The vehicle thing I think is important. You'll see that on here. I did up those prices to kind of match up with the last year's vehicles were. We have a very good fleet rotation right now. We're cycling one out every year. Our fleet's in good shape and I think this continued effort works and is sustainable. We have three patrol vehicles, a K nine vehicle, and the chief has a vehicle as well. And that sometimes will go out for use if we get in a bind. The dispatch reserve fund that we have, so we're currently picking up more agencies, seems weekly. We've recently added six more, so we're up to fourteen total. So that's definitely trending in the direction that I was hoping. And it seems to be working out very well. People are happy. So we're just making sure that we're setting money aside for that because that dispatch equipment is expensive and at some point, like anything else, we're gonna have to replace it. So I think if we can just plan ahead like we have been and keep those reserve funds and this capital plan in place, then we'll be in really good shape. The next one there was the technology reserve fund, very similar to the dispatch stuff that we have. This past year, we did have to replace two of our, basically like our network clouds that we have. It literally stores all our data that we have for the police department. They're really expensive. So to have these funds there and available was very useful. So keeping that going is very important. The police locker room, I'll just hit on that real quick. Looks like that's gonna probably wind down maybe towards the end of June. It's coming along really good. They're sheet rocking. The floor is ready to go. They're probably gonna install that this week. So that's on schedule and it's really nice. So I'm excited for that project. And the last thing on here for us was the bulletproof vests. I know we talked about this during the budget and last year at the capital plan, we did a presentation then. So every five years, we have to replace these vests. Now, there is grants available for these. I can't plan on those grants. I don't know if they're gonna be available, right? So we have to think ahead and set money aside. And I will say the vests that we carry in our cruiser are different than the vests that we wear every day for work. The ones in the cruisers aren't allowed to be used for grant purchases. Those are about two thousand dollars apiece and those are not under the grant funds. It's only for the level two vests that we wear. So I think it's important that we have to do that. And it's not, you know, out of the norm for me to hire somebody or two people in the middle of the year and I don't have a grant available to purchase those vests. So just having those funds available. And I think that's it. Unless you guys had any questions about any of this stuff. A lot of it's similar to what we've had in the last couple of capital plans that I presented. I think the locker room was new last year, but that's probably gonna get closed out fairly soon, hopefully.
Yes, sir. Go ahead. Under cruisers, you listed that you had four, one's dedicated K nine and three is what you need to operate on a ship. Are there any thoughts of adding an additional cruiser?
I, I have thought of that and I think depending on, so COVID obviously affected everything, right? But the one thing that it didn't affect is me driving all over the state for meetings. So the mileage that I actually have on my cruiser is pretty low. And even though that cruiser's paid for and cycled out, that might be an option, that it might be worth the city to keep that vehicle in a rotation or use it for something else that we can do detective work to follow up on cases that we might not necessarily need a marked cruiser for. Yes, I have thought of that.
Because it could be routine repair work, minor accident, but then you're, you're... down a third.
Yeah.
It makes sense to increase that at least one, if not two.
Yeah.
It, it's not a question, but I just can't remember where I read it, somewhere in the newspaper, that Newport, you were cited as being ahead of the curve on the dispatching stuff.
Yes.
That was nice to see.
Yes, absolutely. And I mean, I don't wanna take credit for all that. That was put in place before I took over as the chief. However, I think it's moved forward very well since I became chief, so.
And you're the chief now.
I'm very, I'm very pleased with where that's at.
And we all know the state's getting out of it.
Yeah.
You can tell.
It's happening, for sure. They just had a meeting on Friday that I listened to for the legislative and it was, it's happening, so.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. There's no other new or old business. The next city council meeting will be Monday, April fourth, two thousand twenty-two, at six thirty PM. And we need a motion to adjourn at, my motion was, at seven twenty-five PM.